There's so much pleasure sometimes in just being able to go. Happy New Year, everyone. Delighted to see all of you. It's exciting. We're here in 2024. How many of you remember 1999 and the fear of planes crashing at midnight on the year 2000? Raise your hand. Whoever would have thought we'd be 24 years in? And here we are, still worried about planes crashing, but for other reasons. All right, so I'm going to announce for live captioning our meeting. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. I'm going to call our work session to order where we'll have a presentation of our fiscal year 2024/25 budget overview. Excited for that. I'm going to also ask roll call of board members for record. I'll start with our student trustee, Mr. Burnett.
Here.
Thank you. Am I going to go in alphabetical order? Ms. Davis?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith? Ms. Dr. Thor?
Here.
Dr. Norene?
Here.
Ms. Butler?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
President Richard Lee.
Ah, there you are. Okay, hi, Ms. Smith. Thank you. And with my presence, with my presence, all seven board members and our student trustee are present. Thank you, everyone. So moving into our work session presentation, Dr. Gonzalez, would you like to take us off on that, please?
Yes, President Sullivan and members of the board, happy 2024 to you and everybody else in attendance that's here in person and to the millions worldwide online. Happy 2024. I would like to begin our work session today by introducing Kim Grignio, Vice Chancellor of Finance Services. And so, Ben, excuse me, Kim, would you please take it from here to go over our latest budget review?
Happy to.
Hi, Ms. Grignio.
Hi, President Sullivan. Is the microphone on?
I can't hear you.
Testing, testing. I can hear it though. Okay, there we go. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC, colleagues and guests. I am Kim Grignio and I serve as the Vice Chancellor for Business Services. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. At some point, we'll probably stop saying that, but it's been two weeks. So we'll keep going for a little bit longer. I want to start by saying I always learn something new when President Sullivan reminds me that I need a song to open up our work session. As some of you may recall, I'm not musically inclined, so I always have to do some research. And my research for today's song led me to "Money, That's What I Want," and I'm not going to sing it. Written by Barrett Strong and Barry Gordy, founder of Motown Records, and sung by Strong in 1959. It's a classic hit song with pretty simple lyrics pleading for money and the things that money can buy. The simplicity of the lyrics, the message in it being a catchy tune led to it being covered by several artists, including The Beatles, The Rolling Stones, The Supremes, Jerry Lee Lewis, The Flying Lizards, don't know that group, and many others. What I learned, though, through the research was that the song was written when the civil rights movement was gaining momentum and African Americans were fighting for economic and social rights. Since that time, the message of the song really speaks to everyone, hence the plethora of covers, as it conveys the innate human desire for financial stability and even our desire and need as an institution for financial security. As we continue down the budget and financial planning path of the coming months and years, this song seemed relevant to our journey. I'm always excited when I find one that makes sense.
You nailed, you nailed the song piece, so thank you.
Well, good. So that means I'm done and I can sit down.
Yeah, no, no, you have more to do. Sorry. Go for it.
Okay, so again, I thank everyone for the opportunity to present today. This presentation is largely what was shared at the board's retreat in November with some updates since that time. And although the retreat was open to the public, we thought a work session might be helpful for our system to get more views on what's happening with the budget and again, our first look at the general fund for 2425. And our agenda for today is, first part is a little bit of data review. Second part will be a first look at the general fund budget. Third one will be pretty quick related to the health spending quasi-endowment because we talked a bit about that at the agenda review session for the December meeting and then action was taken at the regular board meeting in December. And then just a quick introduction on the idea of a tuition policy or resolution that will likely move forward with the spring, at least some of that work. So we'll start then with the data review on the next slide and actually the slide after that. And so first, we'll take a look at FTSE, full-time student equivalents. Up through fiscal year 2020, a formula called enrollment growth funding, or EGF, was used to adjust budgets based on changes in FTSE. Relatively small changes of 1% or 2% can typically be managed from year to year. But when the pandemic hit in spring of 20, we, the enrollment drop hit us beginning of fiscal '21. There was a decision made not to reduce college budgets and to essentially suspend that long-existing funding model. This chart shows where we were in 2020, which was really the first year that we'd had any kind of positive enrollment growth. It was extremely small, but it was still positive. And if we go forth and we look at the third column of numbers over for fiscal '21 or the percentage change from 20, I'm sorry, fiscal year '21 to '20, you'll see that we were down 16% in that first year following the pandemic. And then in fiscal year '22, we had another decline, which took us down to 23% below where we were at a previous high of 2020. So then as we move across the chart, you'll see we have projected numbers for fiscal '24, which do show an increase over '23. And then estimated for '25, we also are showing a small increase over '24. Even with those increases, though, we are still well below where we were in fiscal '20, which again was our high point. We're about 17% below. Part of the reason for this chart, or a primary reason for this chart, is I do hear quite often, but my college is growing, when does my college get money? And the reality of this chart shows us that FTSE is really what drives tuition revenue. So FTSE is number of credit hours divided by 30 equals one FTSE. And we charge our tuition revenue based on credit hours. So it's the easiest way for us to gauge how much we'll receive in tuition revenue year after year. And so we still don't have dollars, any more dollars coming into the system. We actually have far less still than we had in 2020. So it's difficult for us to provide increases to colleges that are growing when the entire system isn't growing. So that's really the point of this slide. And the next slide we'll go to, we'll look at headcount. So where we look at FTSE for really the dollars that are coming in, we don't service a FTSE. We actually serve as people. And so when you have a large proportion of your enrollment, which we do, is part-time, you could have two or three students that comprise one FTSE. So when we provide services to students, when we're doing academic support, again, it's not about credit hours. It's about bodies. So it's important for us to continue to look at headcount. And we do talk about enrollment growing a lot, and it is growing in the headcount space, but not necessarily in the FTSE space, which just means we have more and more part-time students than we do full-time students, which is not unusual at all for Maricopa. We just see it really hitting us in a different way with the pandemic and still trying to recover from the pandemic. So again, if we look at the far left, you'll see where we started in 2020, again, the most recent high for us. You'll see in '21, we had a decrease of 16%. Add in another decrease into '22, and now we're up to 18%. And you'll see that we have recovered headcount a bit better than we did FTSE. And so with the projections we have for '24, we'll still be 11% down, but that's a far cry from where we were on the FTSE landscape. So again, this is really just to show that there is growth, but we don't necessarily have the financial growth to correspond with the headcount growth, if that makes sense. So with that, then we can go to the next slide. And another topic of conversation that has come up over time and certainly recently and prior to winter break was again, going back and talking about the reductions that we're taking in fiscal '24, so the current budget year that we're in, and the 1% reduction that we had planned and how that was implemented. So the colleges overall took a 1% reduction, district office divisions 1%, district-wide 1%. So the total cut to the general fund as a system was 1%. And that was recommended by ABC, supported by CEC, and was part of the adopted budget that the board approved. So if we go to the next slide, we'll look at where the colleges took the reductions because I think that's where some of the consternation comes into place. Because some colleges did take a 1.8% reduction, one college took a 1% reduction, and two colleges actually received increases in their budget for the general fund. So this was really trying to get at the idea that not all of our colleges are funded in the same way. And that conversation has been continuing for quite a long time, many years, I would say. I have a slide coming up in a minute that will show more of the reason. I guess we'll maybe confirm that that is the case because that question has come up as well. I hear that everybody's funded differently, but is that really true? So part of what ABC did, what their recommendation was, was to look at that change in funding or that disparity in funding and try to get dollars into the two colleges that are really the lowest funded, being Chandler, Gilbert and Estrella. And they are typically two of our faster-growing colleges and have been over time. So that has been a little bit challenging. But if you look at the very bottom there, the point of this slide is that the grand total was a 1% overall reduction to the colleges. We do hope to have the fiscal year '25 1% reduction plan fleshed out by the end of this month. And then colleges and district office divisions have been working on scenarios for both 1% and 2% reductions for the past several months, but we do want to have that decided by the end of this month so that we can plan accordingly and make the most strategic decisions possible relating to any reductions. So also, if we can go to the next slide, this is the adopted budget per FTSE slide. And this is the piece that speaks to how the colleges are funded. So what we did is we took the fiscal year '23 adopted budget, divided it by the fiscal year '22 FTSE, so it's the most recent completed FTSE we have. And you'll see the budget per FTSE in kind of that middle column. And we did the same thing for '24, divided by '23 FTSE, and then you see the budget per FTSE in that far right column. Towards the bottom there, maybe three quarters of the way down, you'll see average per FTSE is $13,167. If you go back up and look at Chandler and Estrella, which are the two colleges that are not funded at the same level, you will see they are well below the $13,000 average that the, in general, the other colleges are funded. And it's about 30% less than the average. I will speak to Rio Salado. You'll notice that they are called out separately. Rio does have a separate business model. They do not operate in the same way that the other colleges do. They are able to, or they do record their out-of-state online revenues in the auxiliary fund, and those are coupled with the general fund in order to fund their operations. I will share that that's been in place for a very long time, and that is part of the discussion of any kind of a new budget model that we might propose, whether or not they should fold in with everybody else or if they should continue to be treated differently. That's just all up for debate and negotiation, shouldn't say negotiation, up for debate at this point in time. So stay tuned for that conversation to come as well. And with that, then we can go to the next slide, and that will take us to section number two. And this is the first look at the general fund for fiscal year 2025. And I'm going to bring us all back to what we've been talking about for the last couple of years at least. And that is the multi-year look at the general fund and trying to march ourselves back to a balanced budget in the general fund. And just a reminder, a balanced budget is ongoing revenues equal ongoing expenses. And we don't have ongoing expenses that don't have revenues to match them. We have been out of balance in the general fund, I believe it's been since fiscal year 2018. And I just remind everybody that there were decisions, I think strategic decisions made at that point in time to go ahead and move in that direction without knowing that a pandemic was around the corner. We have a whole bunch of things that we can talk about that we decided not knowing that a pandemic was going to hit us in the spring of 2020. So I think, just in my view, I think there were some decisions that were made that made sense at the time. But looking back, we probably could have made a different decision, but we didn't know what was coming. So it is what it is. And so now as a system, we're going to work through that. So just as a reminder, this schedule starts with the adopted budget for '24 and projects us out through fiscal year '29. Previous iterations of this slide have shown, or this schedule have shown us coming back into a balanced budget somewhere around fiscal year '27. You will see that is now pushed out to fiscal year '29. Part of the reason for that are the TBDs that still exist in tuition increases and in differential tuition when it comes to the revenue side of the House. We are not proposing a tuition increase for fiscal year '25. Felt that on the heels of a $12 increase in '24, we needed to try to not do that if we didn't have to do that. So the budget that you will see in the coming months will not contemplate a tuition increase. Differential tuition, we were hoping to have a methodology and approach fleshed out in time to present it to you this month and next month for approval and adoption. We are not there yet. We have a, we have a plan. We have some approval basically from ABC with the methodology going forward. Now we need to work on some data to determine what the data looks like, if it supports what we believe it will support, and then actually put a plan together that will go back to ABC and then CEC and eventually to the board. But we don't think that will likely be ready until we get to fiscal year '26. The calendar is not on our side at this point because we will open enrollment for the fall in March. So for many years now, we've had in place that any tuition changes need to be in place by February with a first read to the board in January. So we're already at January and you don't have it on your docket for a first read. So hoping that we can pull that together. We're trying to be very judicious in our approach and make sure that it is very sound, it is very defensible. And then we'll figure out also an implementation plan. Can we apply it to more programs? We've kind of narrowly defined the scope that we want to start with to do some pilot work and see how the data shakes out because we have to determine what the drivers of the higher-cost programs are. So the work is underway. You will definitely hear more about that when we have updates to the strategic plan because that, of course, is one of the items in the strategic plan. So please know that that update is coming, but that's, I guess, a preview of, I think we've made some progress, but maybe not as much progress as we were hoping that we would have made by now. It's one of those things, and I said this last year, that it shouldn't, doesn't feel like it should be such a difficult task. And the nuts and bolts of it just are very challenging. And part of that is just trying to make sure we dot every i and cross every t and we think about everything we possibly can. So I've realized that just takes some time for us to work through all of those things. But I think at the end of the day, we'll have a much better product than something we did quickly. So with that, then we can go to the next slide, and we'll look at general fund sources. The middle column there, the first column of numbers, is estimated actual for fiscal '24. In many cases, this is what the budget amount is, and in other cases, it's based on what we're able to project. Tuition, for instance, I will share with you, that will be the budgeted amount. Once we get to the March presentation, we'll have better numbers based on where spring ends up with enrollment or is at that point in enrollment. We're way too early in the spring semester right now to know what semester enrollment is actually going to look like. Everything is looking like it's increasing, so that's a very good thing. But we don't, starting classes on Saturday, and we don't even have drop ad happening yet. So we've got a little bit of time before we'll have things settle down, but we should know much better by March. So the, if we go to that middle column of numbers, then proposed for fiscal '25, that $13.7 million from new construction. This is where we have property taxes that come into us that are derived from new construction that occurs. This is, the budget office's estimate is the $13.7 million. Those values will come out on February 10th. So again, by the March presentation, we will have that much closer to where it will be for the fiscal year. We do have SRP and LOO and then miscellaneous and other, and then the transfers continue to be the same. So total revenue we're proposing or projecting for fiscal '25 is $757 million. If we go to the next slide, we'll look at uses. And again, we start with estimated actual for the current fiscal year, and then we have proposed for fiscal year '25. We do start with the total resources from the prior slide of the 758 million. The base expenditures will be the $761.2 million. We will take out the reduction of the 1%. We have required expenditures of actually a little less than $700,000. And again, those are items such as employee compensation changes due to policies. And then we also have $300,000 additional for presidential scholarships, which are intended to offset the higher tuition rate that we had for '24 and then also projected enrollment growth. The proposed expenditures of, the other new expenditures of $24.7 million are for year four of the strategic compensation plan. And so we anticipate that leaving an uncommitted fund balance of just under $6 million. We go to the next slide. We will look at the general fund budget allocations and cuts. So this is just a look back at where we have been for the last four years relating to reductions. So if you look at the lineup, two lines up from the bottom, you'll see the budget reductions. 1% in '22, up through the 1% proposed for '25. Total of 4.5% in reductions and $33.1 million to our budget as a system overall. And you'll also see that the required expenditures and other expenditures are there as well. So if we go to the next slide, we'll look a little bit more at the new expenditures. Because we don't have a lot of new revenues, we don't have a lot of new expenditures. They're pretty limited, and we've left them limited on purpose at this point in time. So we have been notified that ASRS will have a reduction in the rate. We were all excited, and then we calculated it out. It's about $55,000. So I don't know how we're going to allocate a reduction of $55,000, but we'll take anything that isn't an increase at this point in time. And so then the, again, the employee education pay increases will run about $350,000. Again, that's based on employee policies. And then, as I referenced, scholarships, increase of $300,000 for presidential scholarships. So then we get down to the other expenditures, and again, the compensation plan, which is in accordance with board commitments of $24.7 million is what is slated in the plan for fiscal year '25. I will bring to your attention that some of those columns over on the right do have plus signs. I did add a key at the bottom, which you actually can't see. And what that just says is it is included in the base budget in subsequent years. So that is one of the questions that I get, and people tend to key in on the foundation. How come the foundation got $250,000 in '23 and had to give it back for '24 and '25? That is not the case. It is actually rolled into the base budget for future years. This is about new expenditures only, and anything that is ongoing automatically rolls in to the future year budget. So I wanted to make sure that we clarified that on these tables. So the next slide is a look at the historic primary tax levy. Really, the point of this and kind of the bottom part of it is the general fund, the greener part that you can't really see on the screen very well, is much smaller. That's the capital piece, or the piece of the levy that we've dedicated to capital. The blue line that goes up from the bottom left to the top right is what our actual maximum levy is. So this just illustrates the fact that we have not maximized our property taxes. And we haven't done that actually since fiscal year '10. When we do the tax shift to fund capital, it actually eats into that available levy, but we still, again, have, as of fiscal '24, we have $74.5 million of available levy capacity. And if we go to the next slide, this breaks it out in the numerical form because we know we have people who like numbers and people who like graphs, so we're trying to get everybody covered. And you'll see this is since fiscal year '14 and what we're estimating for fiscal year '25. The maximum levy is that first column, so for '25, it's $695 million. Our actual levy is planned at about $610 million with the shift planned for fiscal year '25 and then the split between the general fund and the capital. And so when that is finished, if everything is adopted as is planned, then when we finish fiscal year '25, we'll have about $73 million of available property tax levy. So with that, then we'll go to the next slide and the next section, which is all about health spending and quasi-endowment. Again, I think this will be fairly quick because we did also talk about this at the agenda review session on December 5th. We'll go ahead and think Elsa says. So this just really is defining or reminding everybody or informing everybody, depending on where you are, what a self-funded medical plan is, and just sharing that we have been self-funded since 2005. Part of the reason we went to being self-funded is that it provides flexibility and the ability to customize a plan to fit our employee population versus what every other employer does or what every Blue Cross, Blue Shield or Cigna Health, I don't know if Cigna is still around, the different plans that they offer, we're able to make whatever decisions we want. It also saves costs in that the premiums that are set, we set the premiums at a place where it covers the employee costs rather than industry rates. And the other benefit to it is that we retain funds when claim expenses are lower than expected. So we'll talk about how that is a good thing for us in another slide or two. So the next slide talks about a quasi-endowment reserve. So when you become self-funded, you do have consultants that help you because most of us are not experts in the insurance industry and what insurance coverage should look like. So you always have somebody to help you work through what that looks like. We had built that reserve over seven years. So remember, we became self-funded in 2005, so that's when we started it. And we had contributions of $30.5 million back in 2019 as part of that budget process. We did transfer $33.2 million from that quasi-endowment to the general fund as part of that 2019 adoption. And that quote comes from the board item, which was district-wide priority initiatives. At that same time, we had $31.7 million of balances sitting in the health spending account. So essentially, we had $64, $65 million. So the sense was we don't need to have $65 million to support our self-funded medical plan. So that was where the decision came from, to move the quasi-endowment dollars out of there and put them in the general fund. Again, I'll remind everybody that was just before a pandemic hit us. And had we known that that was coming and had we known that our medical expenses would go up due to COVID and due to, I think, any number of reasons, we might have made a different decision. But that decision was what it was. And so now we're working through how we get back to a place where our medical insurance plan is solvent, and then we have three to six months of reserves available for any catastrophic events. And I don't even want to say out loud that we now know what an example of a catastrophic event might be in the medical insurance space. I never wanted to have an example, actually. So next slide, please, Elsa. And so the recommendation was to reestablish the quasi-endowment. We do have efforts underway to build a multi-year strategic benefit plan to address the annual shortfalls in the health spending account. Those conversations have been ongoing. We will hear far more about those this spring from HR as they're working through the plan, and we'll work through town halls and everything else to help our employees understand. But that, that last point is the critical piece, which prior balances are absorbing the annual shortfalls. And so that $31 million that we had in fiscal '19 in the medical insurance account isn't there anymore. So we have some challenges ahead of us that, again, we as a system are going to have to pull together and address. And so if we look at the next slide, this is where the recommendation actually came in. And it was the recommendation to transfer $17.8 million of fund balance from the general fund and reestablish the quasi-endowment fund to act as our self-insurance medical reserve. That action did get approved at the, by the board at the December 12th meeting, so that piece is finished. I do have a chart there that shows what the different months' coverage are. Again, benefit advisors recommend three to six months of coverage. So what we recommended and what was approved was the minimum, which was three months. And then what we will do, the commitment on my part, is that each year as we close the year, we will see if there are dollars available in the general fund that can be moved to the quasi-endowment as a transfer. That will require board action, so that will always come to the board. We will never do it without your approval. We don't really want to add another line to the annual budget to build that reserve over time because we already know we're upside down, so it doesn't make sense to add it in there. So we want to try to do this over time, but we have the minimum in place now, which was really where we wanted to get started. So with that, then we go to the last section, and this is about tuition policy or, or resolution introduction. And again, this is only an introduction. There's a little bit of history here, though, in this space. Back in February of '96, there was a tuition and fee pricing parameter document approved by the governing board. Then exactly six years later to the day, which I'm still fascinated by that, updates, there were updates in tuition pricing plan adopted by the governing board again. And for all intents and purposes, what those documents did was to require annual consideration of tuition increases based on happy or higher education pricing index. Required an annual analysis to determine the necessity and amount of any recommended increase or if there was no recommended increase necessary. So the, the purpose- So the purpose and intent behind this is to make us look at it each year and not just have somebody off the cuff say, "We don't want to raise tuition." And then we don't. And we find out, you know, six, seven, eight years of that later, we haven't raised tuition at all, and now we really need to raise tuition by $12 a credit hour. So that's the intention behind this. At the retreat, we, obviously, no decisions were made, but the concept of this, I think, was acceptable. So we hope, then, that this spring, we will work with the chair of the board's policy committee to look at what we might draft as a policy or as a resolution. I think there was some inclination to go towards policy, so that it's in policy and not a resolution that might get lost. But I think that is work that will come this spring. And I think that the intention, although it all needs to be worked through, is that that would be part of the budget action that comes to the board on an annual basis as part of the tuition and fee conversation and request. And the next slide is questions, because that is the end of my presentation. So, yeah, oh, I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Greenio, is always very thorough. And as you presented this information at the board retreat, albeit a public meeting, I agree, it was really wise that we bring it out in a different format of forum. So thank you for that. Board members, I'm going to go up and down the line here and see if we have any comments and questions for Ms. Greenio or the chancellor. Mr. Burnett, let's start with you, our student advisor. What are your points or thoughts on this?
I'm still looking, so you can move on to someone else, and I'm still.
Okay, well, then I'll just leap.
Back to me, leap.
Over the chair in between and go to Ms. Davis.
Ms. Greenio, the primary tax levy, are we allowed to spend all that money? Or is that figured into the expenditure limit, and we're not allowed to spend it?
President Sullivan, Ms. Davis, the primary taxes are subject to the expenditure limit, so yes. The maximum capacity that we have there, so that the $75 million that we have not levied yet, we are able to levy that. The board would need to take action. The statutes require us to raise our property taxes no more than 2% over the prior year. But because of the fact that we have not maximized those taxes in years, we have all that capacity, that if we decided next year we wanted to raise 3% instead of 2%, we could do that. The downside or the challenge for Maricopa today is all of those dollars are subject to the expenditure limit. So I cannot advise us to increase the tax levy. Anything more than what we're already doing on the capital side of it would be extremely challenging for us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving to you, Ms. Butler.
Thank you, no questions at this time, thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Norini.
No questions.
Dr. Thor.
Thank you, I have a comment and a question also on the historic primary tax levy. And my comment is that it's very gratifying to see that the decision that we made back in 2018 was a very good one. To see that we now have $58 million in capital capacity is really, really good news. My question is, would you remind us how many more years we have to be able to shift secondary to primary? Or in other words, how many years are left on the general obligation bonds?
Thank you, President Sullivan, Dr. Thor. So the final debt service payments are due 7/1 of 2027. Woo-hoo, we'll all be around to see those payments, I can't wait. And so that'll take us through, we'll levy that payment in fiscal year '27. It'll be the 7/1/27 payment, sorry, I always have to think back on the years. So we'll levy that during fiscal year '27 to pay it on July 1 of '27.
So that, in essence, will be the last year that we'll be able to add to the capacity of the capital?
Yes, in a sense. So there is no rules, no statutes that govern really what we're doing, because what we are levying is within our primary property tax space. The approach, though, the whole methodology behind this, is that as our debt service goes down on those bonds, we're taking that same dollar, that same tax rate from the secondary levy and shifting it to the primary levy, and still keeping the rate the same or lower, never going up. So in theory, that's how we get to fiscal year '27. It doesn't mean that we can't raise property taxes in fiscal year '28 and say 1% is dedicated to capital. We're allowed to do all of those things, those are all designations that we as a system have done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you'll still be on the board, then, when you get to look at those property tax increases? Just thought I'd put that out there for you, Dr. Thor. You're welcome. Ms. Bittersmith.
I should add, maybe, right, depending on what the voters had to do in many multiple cases. But Ms. Greenio, I just have a, and it's more of a comment and a question as well. I have sat through the last year and a half of the American Association of Community College trustees' public policy meetings every month, where 90% of that commentary is about budget reductions across the country, for all the same reason we're having those conversations. So just to put this conversation in total perspective, do you have any idea? I mean, we're looking at a 1%, essentially. Do you have, do we know what's happening in other districts? And I'm going to say, we are unique and special, and no one else compares to us. But having said that, there are other larger districts, we're not alone in this same conversation, I presume.
Yeah, you were kind of cutting in and out a little bit, so you might need to pull a closer.
Okay, thank you. You got what I was asking.
I got the question, and that is that there's a lot of conversation, I think, throughout the nation about budget reductions, and do we know where everybody else is really in comparison to Maricopa? I don't, I can certainly do some research to find out where everybody is. I know that other districts in the state have done reductions as well. But I will also say that some of our rural sister districts have had their enrollment bounce back in ways that Maricopa didn't. And by the way, Pimas didn't, and Coconinos didn't either. I think a lot of it has to do with the really, truly urban versus rural, and the fact that, you know, the plethora of job opportunities available in the urban areas doesn't necessarily exist in the rural areas. And so I think that's part of it. There were also some populations that, for instance, Eastern Arizona College lost and then got back once the pandemic lifted. So that was really their return to normal. And we don't have those same types of populations. So I do meet with the business officers for the other districts on a monthly basis. I will share that, you know, of all the data that we share, that's not necessarily one of the pieces that we do share, and I probably should ask that question. We talk often about tuition, we talk about salary changes, we talk about those things. So I can get some feelers out there and see where they are. I know many other systems have looked at reductions, have looked at program reviews and reduced programs, have done lots of different things that I don't know that we as a system have done necessarily to the same level as some of those other colleges and districts have done.
And I only ask that question not to lead your answer, but because I've spent literally an hour a month listening to all the tales of woe from other college trustees from across the country. None of us like to see these reductions, but this is substantially less than what I'm hearing in horror stories from other parts, you know, both smaller and larger districts. And it sounds like that's exactly what's happening here in Arizona as well, too, depending upon the demographic of the district. Everybody's looking at the reality of what they have to do, notwithstanding also trying to move forward to increase enrollment.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith. And yes, I think that is true, and I think that as a system, we have tried to keep our system whole and sound as much as possible. And I think that is the reason for a general fund budget that is not balanced, if you will. Part of the struggle that I believe that we have, and it kind of goes back to the whole FTSE versus headcount argument, that we're not servicing FTSE, we're servicing headcount. And we had a panel of superintendents way back when, I'm trying to remember when that was. For some reason, I think it was January of '21 or '22, maybe, that came and just said it in a way that has resonated with me ever since, that the students that we were getting that next fall, so graduating from high school at that time, had only had one year of normal high school. And they were coming to us likely to be even less prepared for college than any student population we'd had. So the struggle with that is, that means we have to provide even more support to those students to get them across the finish line. And that is where we are funding on headcount, not on FTSE. So it's hard, it's a very difficult conversation to try to figure out where the places are that we can cut safely and responsibly and not affect those services to the students. I think our colleges are working through that every year, that we've had reductions. I know the district offices as well. So, you know, I look at 4.5%, and other people will say that's not very much. And the dollar amount, it's $33 million out of $700 million, and it doesn't sound like it's very much. But the fact that it's, we're, I think, a fairly lean organization anyway, so it just is a challenge for us to figure out where to cut and not affect services. Because at the end of the day, we're all about our students and our students' success, and we've got to get the dollars in the right places with which to ensure that that happens in the best possible way.
Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed, Ms. Smith, thank you for joining us physically, in person, you've been listening. Do you have any comments or questions?
I do, thank you for the presentation. This is a question that, it's kind of a synthesis question. So moving forward, both as a member of the Strategic Planning Committee and just as a board member generally, I'm looking at the moment when we'll have a more balanced budget in terms of comparing our revenue to our expenses. What would you say are the revenue lines that are at risk of being the most fluid? So what I mean by that is, as we think about approaching '27, '28, and '29, what should we, as board members, be looking for in particular? I know that enrollment is an obvious one, but I'm wondering if there are any other signals that we can be looking for that can help us understand whether or not we continue to be on the right path of balancing our budget?
Thank you for that, President Sullivan, Ms. Smith. So, especially in the general fund, I mean, we really have two revenue sources at this point in time, property taxes and tuition and fees. And fortunately, for us as a system, and for every district in the state, property taxes is a very stable source of revenue. We control what we do, there are limits on what we can raise, for sure. I can remember back to some challenges that we had, try to remember now. It could have been after the 2008, the Great Recession. We lost dollars, if you will, in the new construction piece. So it was always a guaranteed increase in revenues. And prior to that, at our height, we were getting $14 million a year of new revenues. If there is a change in the economy again, and we start to lose those new construction dollars, that will be one of the challenges that we will face. And that will be then a decision as to whether or not we levy additional property taxes to offset that, if we increase tuition and fees to offset that. So it's a very, very, very stable source of revenue, but that's like one piece that we always want to keep our eyes on. Otherwise, it's fine. When the economy turns down, property taxes still get collected. So it's always an interesting little space that we are, I think, fortunate most times to live in. The other piece is tuition, and that is all based on where our enrollment is and where we set tuition. So, I mean, other than that, we don't have any other real sources of revenue in the general fund. I know that we have huge efforts underway to come up with additional revenue streams, so we'll have to see what those end up being and when they really come to fruition, and when we've got dollars coming in that we can count on, because that's the other part of it. We also have to look at where the stability is in those revenues. Do we use them for one-time expenses? Do we use them for ongoing expenses? That's a question I ask all the time, and people always get annoyed when I ask that question. And I said, "Well, but that depends on what we do with it at the end of the day." So we'll have to watch that. There is always potentially a chance that we could get into the, we're already in the state funding formula, maybe at some point there will be a dollar amount attached to that funding. I would also caution us, though, against ever thinking that that is a stable source of revenue. Our experience tells us that it really isn't. So again, that comes down to how much it is and what guarantees there are that we'll have it year after year. So, I mean, that's at this point what we're working with. And so, you know, it makes it a little bit simpler on my part, because there's not a lot of different options available, but at the same time, then, those are the only options we have available. So, not sure if that really is answering your question.
Yes, I think it would be great, whether it be in our Strategic Planning Committee or perhaps in the subsequent session with the chancellor. I know we've talked about having additional revenue streams in the future. I know that's part of the strategic plan as well. And so I wasn't sure if, for example, we were already starting to hope for or allocate in some way some thinking around those lines, so the answer's no.
Well, I, sorry, President Sullivan, Ms. Smith, I think we're thinking about it, but certainly there's no allocation until we know what those dollars are.
Understood, thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to build a little bit with my question or comments on what Ms. Bittersmith and Ms. Smith have said. You know, going back to, I don't know what slide it is, but on my paperwork, well, I don't even know what page it is, it's the detailed 1% budget reduction for fiscal year '23, '24 is recommended by ABC, and then moving into the adopted budgets down to multi-year general fund projections. It appears to me to answer or to look at budgeting to achieve a balanced budget, to begin to integrate a tuition policy, so we do take a look at that annually and not wait for 10 years, and then all of a sudden have to confront a significant increase quickly, to be faced with only two funding, primary funding streams rather than three, which I don't think will ever happen, frankly. And to your point, if it does, it will be a fluctuating commitment, as far as I can anticipate. I guess my challenge is somewhat, or my question is somewhat to Dr. Gonzalez, and then that will trickle down to all of you. We have discussed often a new business model for funding, for budgeting, for thinking through efficiencies, for looking at how revenues are applied. That takes a lot of commitment and a lot of work and a lot of open-mindedness. I do think some of that is going to be driven through some of the Strategic Planning work, committee work, the integrated thinking, the balance between individual colleges versus the system. I did say balance there, I didn't say one in lieu of another. So what type of efforts are you anticipating, and in potentially what timeframe, to begin to really reconstruct a way we look at money, a way we look at budgeting, so we can avoid, we're cutting into bones, I think I've heard that phrasing, to ensure that there's equity? I'm not saying equality, but equity? And we're still achieving our best work? I'm leaning forward, looking at you, Dr. Gonzalez, because I think you're going to have to ping-pong that somewhere else, but I think that would be of interest to the board. As I'm hearing the questions, the conversations around tax levies, the percentage cuts, that there's schools that have different models. What is that conversation future, and where do you see us going so we do not have to, no offense, listen to the exact same presentation just with different numbers every year? And by the way, it's a great presentation, that's not criticism. Just want to know bigger picture vision thinking.
President Sullivan, members of the board, it's a really good question, very complex question. And as you were asking it, I was thinking about, you know, many of the fixed costs that we have in our organization, where upwards to 75% of our dollars are tied to our human resource, and probably another 5% to 10% are the things like the. And probably another five to ten percent are the things like the electricity, the fleets that we keep fueled, and there's other things. And by the end of the day, we may be talking about somewhere between five and ten percent of how we spend that differently compared to how we spend it today. So while there's certainly a need to look at this, I think we need to keep that in mind as we redesign a budgeting allocation process where human resources is our greatest investment in that. And that might mean, what, not necessarily do we, I'm not talking, please don't say that I'm saying that we need to reduce that expense.
No, I'm not hearing that.
How do we rethink that as a resource in our organization to address the needs in our organization? And I don't know what that looks like. I think we have ideas, but that's a cultural shift for our organization. And then to Ms. Smith's question around revenue generation and where we are, we've been having discussions, we've got a small team that's working on that. There are a few things that have surfaced to the top. Some might have a greater production of revenue than others, but on a, you know, nearly eight-hundred-million-dollar operating budget, there's probably not a lot immediately that has a significant impact, but we'll take every little bit that we can get. So we have excess property around our system that is not being utilized to the extent that it was being utilized before the pandemic. We are exploring the strong possibility of a form of housing on our college campuses, and I don't want anybody to think about a traditional dorm, but perhaps housing within intent, of course, being available to students, but perhaps also being available to faculty, staff, and other members of the community to address some of the housing issues in and around the county, to make, you know, workforce housing affordable. So, and then to also consider, you know, the human resource aspect, our employees are our greatest resource. We have a significant number of people who work in Maricopa who are experts in fields and are known for their expertise in their fields. And these are, there are probably things that we can do to capitalize on our collective expertise as a system. I think that there are people around the country, around the state, that are willing to pay for the services that we can provide and the level of expertise that we can provide in certain spaces. So those three things are the first, the top three things that come to my mind. I'm sure if I asked Brian Spiker to comment more, because he's one of the folks that is working on this team, he might be able to fill in some of the gaps of what I've said, but at the highest level, that's what we're doing in terms of revenue generation. And then, you know, as you saw in the differences, and some colleges are experiencing a reduction that equals 1%, there are two colleges that are actually seeing an increase, and that's to address the per-footsie allotment that is out of balance at the moment. So a number of things to think about. And when I was president at Gateway, and we had many great arguments and debate about how we were going to spend few dollars, at the end of the day, a lot of times, we were talking about less than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And some people soured relationships over those dollars. That's certainly something that we don't want to do inside Maricopa. We need to be really smart about how we approach the very limited resources that we have and that we're going to likely continue to receive a bit at a time.
Dr. Gonzalez, thank you for your insight and comment into that. You know, again, as things strike me moving forward, we aren't at a cliff, but it sometimes feels like it. And I can see you nodding your head. And maybe some days, we actually do say we're at a cliff. I think what I appreciate in, as we've gone through these budget conversations, certainly the support through compensation plan, and I know we'll be getting another modeling for that as this one ends, our communitas ends, the idea of, again, a tuition review policy, the quasi-daimon, we're slowly making some adjustments. But what I also hear, and I believe this district is prepared to do, is to trust the conversation and to really begin to open up opportunities to think differently, embracing perhaps new models, new ideas around funding through foundation activity. But I think we're at that cusp, not just of a cliff, but of innovation, of looking at technology, of having your leadership, Ms. Bones' leadership and others, to help us drive some different thinking. We've been so committed to surviving and to not jeopardizing our resources, our people, our programs. But I'm perceiving this element of trust and leadership, where if we all are engaged together in the conversation, we can probably get somewhere else. And I want to thank you and applaud you for that leadership to move us there, because I think as a board, we're all invested in thinking about this differently and moving this to your leadership with your councils and your presidents, to think a little bit outside the box, trust the process, know that people are backing the concept of investment resources and imagination to really get us forward. And I think it's been highlighted as you presented this, and we're all nodding and accepting the reality, and yet being inspired to do something differently. So thank you for your leadership, Ms. Bones. You have a big job ahead, too, and with all of the colleagues in human resources and technology in that arena. So I think that's where I may want to conclude our budget conversation. Ms. Smith, please.
I just wanted to plant one other seed, and that is around venture philanthropy and a possibility of trying to identify a philanthropist that would want to help Maricopa have equity in an education technology company, for example. I could elaborate on this point, but I wanted to say that, like, something I've been really hungry for these last couple of years are attempt, throwing ideas that may at first glance seem a little bit out there and just workshopping them a bit. So per Ms. Sullivan's point, that, you know, the budget conversations have been pretty similar over the last couple of years. So like, one idea that I haven't heard before would be, what would it look like to have a venture philanthropy approach in Maricopa? Who would we target as the first investors, and who would we want to invest in?
Yeah, so there's lots of stuff out there. It's pretty exciting. You're smiling.
Well, I, I'm just, and I'm sitting here thinking, and this is, I asked our leaders to rest and reflect over the winter break, and one of the things that I thought about was that, in many ways, I think it's safe to say we're on the other side of this pandemic, and we still hear about COVID, but we're, we've come back and we all look different. And we have many new leaders at the executive level of Maricopa, and I think that there's a real hunger across Maricopa with this new strategic plan, the sense that it's time for a shift in our culture. We're at a crossroads where that can happen. And if we don't do it now, then I don't think it will take long for us to get down the road where we look back and say, man, we really missed an opportunity to change this organization. Change is scary for some people, because it means that you might have to do something different, but it can be a good different. And the way that we can minimize that angst that comes with change is through this shared governance process, to invite people to the table, to ask them, what, how could Maricopa look different? What can Maricopa do differently? We ask, we should ask one another, and we should ask our students, our community members, and then we should actually do what these folks are asking us to do. That's, that's the personal challenge that I'm taking, and I'm hoping that the leaders here understand that and are also taking that, that we have this one shot in Maricopa's history to really make this a different organization moving forward. And we finally have a group of people, including our bench of governor, governing board members up here, that I think are very supportive of something different in Maricopa. So that's the smile on my face, is if we don't do it now, we don't know what we're going to have a year from now.
What is that saying that we tell our little granddaughters now? You turn this brown into a smile? Okay, someone must know that a little ditty. I haven't mastered, oh, you do, Eddie? Is that?
Brown upside down.
You could be a grandpa, too.
Wow.
President Sullivan. I just wanted to-
Ms. Bitter Smith.
-recapture what Board Member Smith said and then what Chancellor Gonzalez said, because I think, though, you mentioned some little bit out-of-the-box ideas, housing, charter schools, which is very compatible to what Jacqueline just said. Those are opportunities that are obvious ones for us, and maybe it is technology. I mean, we have a great laboratory of how that works down the street in Tempe, but there are also laboratories across the country, and I think we're primed to do that. We have the thought process and the manpower. So I just want to echo back to you, I think, I don't want to speak for the full board, but I suspect you would not get pushed back beginning to explore that as part of our, one of our strategic goals.
Speaking from the Strategic Planning Committee as a member, we're on it, right? Okay, board, thank you. I'm going to then, thank you again, Ms. Grunio. Love the song, the background behind the song. I think we're taking it to heart. You're closing out my work sessions with a song. I appreciate that. Thank you. So I'm going to adjourn the work session, and we've made a decision that we're going to move to a gender review right now, not special meeting. So we can just move right into that conversation, and then we'll move into a special meeting, and then subsequent to that, an e-session. So with that, board members, please, let's pull out paperwork for our agenda review. Ms. Macias, I think you know we're ready for agenda review conversations. Yes, you have all of that up. And now I'm going to call to order the agenda review meeting of the Maricopa County Community Colleges District Governing Board of January nine, 2024. And today, we're going to review the agenda for the January twenty-three, 2024 board meeting. Again, I've read earlier the live captioning announcement. I'll repeat it. We are live captioning our meetings, so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. There are no substitutions this, today for meeting attendance, and once again, I'm going to call Rohl for the agenda review. I'm going to start with, again, Mr. Burnett.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Bitter Smith.
Here.
Ms. Butler.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Norini.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Here.
With my presence, there's seven zero board, seven board members present and our student trustee. Moving into the agenda review, as always, we will have the regular meeting content. I know we've discussed slight modifications to the agenda. I think you'll see those apparent at the January regular meeting. A lot of those will occur under Chancellor Report and other items as we move forward. Under the consent agenda, I have several items for comment or approval. Board members, I'm assuming you have read all of the material presented, attached to consent agenda items. Do you have any comments or questions this evening on that? If you do speak up? Yes, Dr. Thor.
Yes, I have a question on consent agenda item number three, approval of the acceptance of a transfer of a new grant in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars from the Maricopa Community Colleges Foundation to Rio Salado College from J.P. Morgan Chase and Company for a one-year program for incarcerated reentry programs. And I looked at the budget for that program and didn't see that tuition is covered. So how is tuition being paid?
Dr. Gonzalez, Ms. President Smith.
Yes, Dr. Thor, President Sullivan, well, I'll ask President Smith to come up and offer an explanation.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, President Sullivan, Board Member Thor. Tuition is actually going to be paid for through second chance Pell. So this was all part of why J.P. Morgan Chase came and worked alongside Rio. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on any of the consent agenda items? Being none, then, when we move to the nine consent action items for the meeting, forthcoming meeting, you can see that one is approval of the Gateway Early College High School Classroom Site Fund Proposal, particularly with the three oh one, noted as three oh one funding. And the second item is approval of the Phoenix College Prep Academy Classroom Site Fund Proposal, also formerly known as Prop three oh one funding. Does anyone have any comments or questions on that item, as they will be presented for action at the next board meeting? Okay. Next item would be then on the agenda, the read of employment and separations for November fourth, twenty-three through December one, twenty-three. And then we have a placeholder for our budget analysis report, Fund One. Are there any comments or questions from board members on those two upcoming items? Being none, then we get to go into community linkage and give all of our personal reports, but I'm going to call out one right now, and I'm sure we'll comment on it at the other meeting. But one of our board members, or one of the people sitting up here in the deus got married over break. I didn't. I'm already there. Hmm. Wonder who that is, Mr. Burnett? Do you have any comments?
Thank you, President Sullivan. I apologize, I did miss the last board meeting. I was packing for my honeymoon. It was a phenomenal event, exactly the way she wanted it. So everything went well, very well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations, by the way. Makes her a new New Year, in so many ways. Okay. Any other comments or questions, board members? And our next meetings, as you can note, they're going to be in February. I believe they will be back at the Rio Salado Conference Center, but we're appreciative of the environment here at Phoenix College for the month of January. Thank you. This is delightful, it's peculiar to set out a deus in a meeting, but thank you, you've made this very welcoming for us, President Britt, and all to your team. So thank you for that. All right. So normally, I would ask to adjourn us into an executive session, but instead, I'm going to put us on pause. And now I'm looking at General Counsel, I'm going to put us on pause, and I'm going to interrupt this meeting to move us to another meeting, and that is the special meeting where we will take action on the election of officers. Just making sure I have all of the right documents in front of me, so I don't flub that one. I actually learned to press all of the green lights on my microphone today. I don't know, it takes you to the last meeting to figure out how to do that. But once again, I'm going to move us then into our special activity, as noted, for the election of officers. Once again, we're live captioning our meetings for the record. This is a special interlude meeting of the Maricopa County Community Colleges District Governing Board of January nine, 2024. Board members are present, as they were moments ago, under agenda review, which means all governing board members are present, including our student advisor. We have two items to discuss. One is the election of a board president, and the other is the election of board secretary. So I'm going to open the floor for nominations for the office of president, but I'm going to take my presidential power that I have for one more minute, and I'm going to nominate Ms. Susan Bitter Smith to become our next governing board president. Ms. Bitter Smith, do you accept my nomination?
I do. I don't think I have a choice, but I do.
That's a dangerous way to say that. You never know. All right, I'm going to accept that you've accepted my nomination. Board members, do you have any other individual to nominate? Being none, all those in favor of Ms. Susan Bitter Smith serving as president of the governing board for 2024, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, you are now our duly elected governing board president. I'll pass this on in a minute, but-
But I believe you're going to run the rest of the meeting, correct? The rest of the elections, as I understand it?
Yeah, and into the exec session.
And into the exec session as well. And I just will say, at our regular board meeting at the end of the month, I want you to know, we'll, we will say some things about our outgoing president, who has had historic tenure, thank goodness. So with that, I will let you continue.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Well, actually, I don't know what you're going to say, so maybe I can't say thank you yet. Yeah. I'm excited that you are stepping into the role and I look forward to working with you as your lead. All right, board members, I'm now going to ask for nominations for the office of secretary. And anyone raising their hand for a nominee? Dr. Thor.
I nominate Dr. Tom Norini for secretary.
Thank you. Before I get back to you, Dr. Norini, are there any other nominations for board secretary? Being none, Dr. Norini, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Are you familiar with the role?
Yeah, vaguely.
Thank you. Okay, so board members, all those in favor of Dr. Tom Norini serving as secretary of the governing board for 2024, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, congratulations. Dr. Norini? By a vote of 7-0, and with our student advisory trustee voting, you are elected unanimously to serve as secretary. So now the elections have been completed. And I offer my congratulations and best wishes to both of you for a very successful year and also to all the other board members as we work forward to support you in your leadership. So I'm going to announce that this interlude is over and go back to my script. And now I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the agenda review that had an interruption, which we've now completed with it. And I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn us into an executive session pursuant to consultation for legal advice with the attorney, attorneys for the public body pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A4 to consider its position regarding settlement discussions conducted in order to avoid litigation regarding Indian Harbor Insurance Company. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. All those in favor of moving into the executive session for reasons noted, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Vote by a vote of 7-0, including the student advisory vote. I'm going to ask the governing board to adjourn to executive session. After we meet in executive session, we will be returning to our Diaz to continue the meeting pursuant to any discussion and outcome of the executive session. Mr. Burnett, you're excused. You need to go home. You're married. So we will see you on the 23rd. Some of us are married too, but we're not rushing home as quickly as you are, so I don't. What can I say? All right, so board members, we're going to exit this room and proceed to our meeting room in the admin building. Where are we going? We're going that way? Right down the stairs. They'll meet us there. Does anyone know exactly what that means? Ah, Dr. Britt, you're going, okay. We'll be there and then we will proceed to that meeting and then we will return here at the end of that to conclude our board meeting with a vote. So with that, I'm going to slam the gavel last time. Good night, everyone. Have a good evening. Wouldn't have been a meeting without me not doing that. All right, so I now call the special meeting with action to order. The time is 6:25 PM. All governing board members are present and we're here to approve settlement of claim against Indian Harbor Insurance Company for reimbursement of costs. Therefore, do I have a motion to approve settlement of claim against Indian Harbor Insurance Company for reimbursement of costs in the amount of $2,625,000?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Bitter Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Board members, any discussion? Being none, I'm now going to call a roll call vote of the board members for this action item. Ms. Bitter Smith? Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Norini?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Thor?
Aye.
I also vote aye. And so all those in favor are seven governing board members with none opposed. So by a vote of 7-0, the settlement of claim against Indian Harbor Insurance Company for reimbursement of costs in the amount of $2,625,000 is approved. Thank you, Mr. Curtin, and thank you, Ms. Falkenberg, for bringing us to this point. I know any settlement is tough, but this was a really, this was a successful outcome on the issue and we appreciate your support and the work that you did to get us to this point. Dr. Gonzalez, I think we're good on this then. And so the special meeting with action of the Maricopa Community Colleges Governing Board has concluded. And I want to thank you all for the work that you've all done today and in the past. And so have a good night, everyone. Be safe going home. Thank you. Good night, board members.